This is the Barrington Zoning Board of Adjustment. As Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to be electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency orders, this is to confirm that we are utilizing the Microsoft team for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the Microsoft team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-603-664-0240 and conference ID 1970213, or call 603-664-0195, or email mgases@barrington.nh. Today is Wednesday, January 20, 2021. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So I'm now going to call the roll. Cheryl Huckins.
Here.
Raymond Damaris.
Here.
George Bailey.
Here.
Dave Whitten. Dave? Dave, you're on mute. Say yes.
Yes.
And Chair Karen Forbes. We're going to turn to the first item. We'll deal with the minutes at the end of the meeting, and we will deal with the first matter, which is 211-3-GR-21-ZBVA variants. Owners Stacy and Christopher Libby of the applicants online.
Yep. Hello.
Do you want to make your presentation?
Sure.
So, if you don't know what you... So, alright, so you look... This is probably your first time, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you have the burden of proof, and you need to establish the criteria. So I would start, if I were you, by explaining what your project is, and why you need the variants, and how it meets the criteria. There was a section in there that you needed to fill out, where you talked about in what way granting the variants be consistent with the spirit of ordinance and all that. First of all, start by explaining your project.
Sure. Yeah, so the basic gist of the project is that we're just trying to build a garage here next to the house. We don't currently have a garage, so this would be the only one on the property. And so, that's... It's a detached building. And so that's basically all it is, not a real exotic project. And the basic situation that we have is our lot is... It's below the standard size for a building lot in Barrington. But in addition to that, it's also fairly oddly shaped, sort of like a long triangle. So when we got into trying to get the permit and looking at setbacks, we couldn't really figure out a way to get it to fit in the property reasonably. So we had a survey done on the property and set it up, and I think where we're at basically right now is that we would like to try to hit as many of the setback requirements as we can. So in this case, we'll... There are only three sides. Two of them are roads, and in this scenario, we would hit the setback from Brooks Road, the setback from our neighbor, and then we're asking for a variance on the, I don't... I guess, road that goes behind our property. That's kind of shown, if you guys are seeing this picture that's being shared, it's the kind of not-quite-straight line on the left. So what we've tried to do is maintain the 40-foot setback, which is shown on the yellow line on the right to Brooks Road. And then the only other boundary that we have is really at the top of the picture, but it's not really in play. We're quite away from that. And as you can kind of see, there's not... You know, there's really not much space here in this lot to put any building. So we're just hoping that, you know, we can get a little bit closer to that back edge, and that that would be essentially what we're asking for approval on.
So if you just want to also briefly address the conditions for the variants, that was the 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 that you filled out. I mean, you did some of it already, but talk about the neighborhood. Do you have your...
Oh, I see. Yeah. So, I want to just... We'll just read this. Alright, so I'm just going to kind of read it the way it was written, and then if we want to talk about it, we can. "The existing non-conforming residential lot has room for the proposed garage. Proposed garage would be located consistent with the already development on this small parcel and not cause any harm or depreciation to the neighborhood." So I think that, you know, the spirit of that is that it's... The building is essentially kind of designed to look like it'll match the house. It'll be built by a contractor and should, you know, should improve the property overall. And so I think that's sort of the spirit of Part 1. You know, Part 2 is essentially, you know, the need of a garage. You know, right now, we park kind of out near the road. This would allow us to, you know, get the cars in, get them off the dirt road, so that, you know, they're not constantly covered in sand and dust like they always are today. But that's, you know, that's just sort of the general desire for a garage, I think. And I think if you look at it, this area in the front, this bottom part of the triangle is a pretty large lawn. So the way the garage is situated, we're trying to maximize the aesthetic and functional value of the garage. So it looks nice as you, you know, enter the property. So curb appeal should be maintained with that, just one of our goals, just in general outside of the variants. And again, you know, there's a note here that, you know, as an improvement to the property, adding a garage and, you know, should increase the property's lot value overall, and, you know, as such, probably the revenue to the town.
Does anybody on the Board have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, we have the right-of-way in the back. What does that serve?
Yeah, so that is... The story's a little unclear. That is town property that we believe connects a piece of property that's sort of behind this lot, out behind a couple other lots that are here.
Currently not used for anything, and there's trees growing through it. It's probably actually hard to tell what it is in the pictures that we've attached, because it looks like a forest.
Yeah. Other than the two stone walls, there's... It just looks like a section of forest.
I believe it's an old Class 6 unmaintained road. I'm pretty sure from what the surveyor said, and it's all overgrown.
Pretty sure it's not what we're looking for.
What was that, Dr.?
I just... I just... I said, "I'd just like to know," like as Ray has said, "it's, you know, just an overgrown road. That's fine. I'm not going to dig a hole on that one." I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, George.
Sir, when you... Are you planning on putting a single-story garage?
In essence, yeah, there's...
No, sir. Yes or no? Are you putting a single-car garage, or are you going to put one and a half or two?
It's a three-car garage with a loft.
So like, storage above it or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How high do you... How much storage space do you plan on having in that loft, Madam?
It's a little in the being...
I think it's going to be a 10, 12 pitch roof.
So it'll probably be like about a... Maybe an 18 by... I don't know, might be like an 18 square, you know, floor above part of the garage.
18 feet by 4 feet?
No, 18 by 18, I would think, roughly, depending on how the trust is layout. But, and that would be, like I said, essentially a loft over half of the garage.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anybody?
I haven't seen this 40 feet on a right-of-way before. Is that... First time I've seen that, because I mean, typically, we'd have 30 feet on the back, but because it's a right-of-way, we have 40. Haven't seen that before. Marcia, can you clarify that for us?
Yeah, it's considered... It's having frontage on two roads. So it happens a lot. Sometimes we have it with corner lots with frontage on two sides, and that's why they end up with having the 40-foot setback. I mean, setback.
Sure. Good. Cheryl, any questions?
No. No.
Okay. I'm going to ask... Close the Board...
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Dave. Go ahead.
So I think is this like Town Hall Road? Is this part of the original Town Farm Road or something?
Yes, I believe so.
It's the back end of it?
Yeah.
And I don't think that road continues all the way through to Town Farm Road, because there's some wetlands or, you know, crossing it last room.
So trails?
And then the only other question I have is, why is there a bump out on this, this shown on this right-of-way? It looks like a bump out that intrudes on your... Like, it goes closer toward your property. Is there any reason...
Yeah, that's a really good question. Our surveyor was wondering that, too, and we don't really know why.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Anybody else? Oh, hearing none. Well, I'm going to ask if there's anybody from the public on to speak in favor of the application. Hearing none, I'm going to ask if there's anybody from the public wanting to speak in opposition to the application. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public testimony of the... On the application, and the Board is going to commence. Anybody's thoughts?
I have some.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. My concern is that, looking at the garage, I've seen several put up, and people are actually using it for a kind of a fun spot, where you could put the TV and turn around and have kind of like their little entertainment area above the garage. And that's just a concern of mine, that, you know, we're asking for a three-car garage, and now we're... And we're going to have a complete floor up there. So that's the only problem I have with it.
Well, one of the bays will be lofted, because we're...
Point of order?
Yeah. It's not time for any responses. We're just discussing whether or not it meets the standards. Anybody else from any other Board member?
I don't have a problem with it. I think the bump out, if that wasn't there, they probably almost would meet the setback. And it's a right-of-way that's not even being used, so...
Exactly. That's fine.
I don't have a problem with this, and I mean, I'm not going to play fortune teller and try and figure out what they're going to do with the storage above it. I accept their explanation that it's storage. I mean, that's what most people do with their garage, so...
I guess it's an odd-shaped lot, and you've got two roads on either side. The building envelope is very small. If you were meeting the whole standards, it would be impossible to put a garage in this lot and meet all the standards. So I think... And I understand George's concern, but if that's a violation, if they do something violent, it's up to us.
And as I said, Madam Chair, that was just a concern I have with it. The other question, Madam Chair, maybe you can answer it, or there is... Because of this right-of-way, if it hasn't been used for, what is it, 20 years, it can revert back to...
No.
How does that work?
No. The public never loses the right to rival if it's a public way, and anybody who has property down the other end can always use it. So it doesn't... 20 years, it doesn't go away.
Okay. Thank you.
I make the motion we grant the variants.
I second that.
You got that, Marcia? Okay. And I'm going to call the roll call. Ray?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's a 5 to 0. The variance request has been granted.
Thank you.
Good luck with your new garage.
Thanks.
I'm looking to build one myself.
Do you need anything else from us?
Pardon? I'm going to call the next case.
No, we don't need anything else from you.
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you ask something? I think you're all... You're going to get a notice from the town that it's been granted. It's been granted effective tonight.
Great. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
All right.
The next case is 239-1.1-HT-C-21-ZBVA variants. The owners are David and Glenda Henderson. Is the applicant or a representative on?
Present.
Yes.
Dave, you're going to be the representative? We have an authorization? Yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, before you begin, I've had a relationship with Mr. Garvey probably about 10 years ago, doing some work, just for the record. I can feel like I'm acting impartially, so...
Yeah. Okay. That's not a reason to be conflicted out. I've had dealings with Dave Garvey, too, so...
Many years.
I should probably speak that I have a relationship with David Vincent, the land surveyor, that did the original design on this.
I don't think that's a conflict. You have to have a financial interest in the project, or some personal interest in the project itself.
Nope. I just thought I'd mention it.
Yeah. All right. So Dave, want to make your presentation?
So this property is a fairly large parcel. It's in the center of Barrington. Literally, it's next to the Christmas Dove and the Credit Union land. The parcel is not quite 30 acres, it's 28.99. Has frontage on Route 9, which is on the west side of the lot that was subdivided from the original parcel. That frontage is almost 100% wet. The Boards saw fit to do the subdivision and to do a variance... Excuse me, a special exception that was granted, and I think I quoted the case, at ZB06-605, which basically allowed for a 40-foot right-of-way to access the backland behind the original house and park. So the property will be accessed through that right-of-way. There's no way that there would be any kind of access granted across the wetlands on the other side. The parcel itself, when you get out back, is fairly... I mean, it's basically about 26 acres in total on the backside. It's fairly rectangular to square. It is, shall I say, topographically challenged. The original, as you enter from the edge of the right-of-way into the rectangular area, it's somewhat level and immediately starts to climb back to the north and the west. That climbing continues for probably 60% of the parcel. The topography slopes are probably somewhere in the vicinity of anywhere between 10 and 25%. So they're fairly significant. As you get to the top, there's a plateau that basically reaches back to the Lemos property, and that's the area that, in which there would be the future of single-family homes. In the process, because of the way the topography goes up and down in a number of different directions, in the process of looking at it, it was suggested by the surveyor that perhaps we do a single-family down at the bottom, closer to the Christmas Dove property, but that remains to be seen. So the application is to service three homes versus one, which was allowed as a part of the original subdivision. Now, we have a second problem in that the zoning requires us to have... Because of the zoning, we require us to have commercial on the first floor. Now, you know, everybody, I think we've all been involved in the planning process for a long time, from my knowledge of everybody here on the table. But, you know, overall, planning is not an exact science, and when the master plan was done and the village district and town center was created, I'm sure nobody went out and looked at the topography on this land. It is, shall we say, near impossible to do any kind of a commercial venture back there just because of the fact that the topography is so bad and the fact that it's so far off the road. I mean, commercial property needs to have visibility, frontage, and traffic in order to be anywhere near successful. So, I mean, that's the overall picture. The plateau up top can very easily, I think, receive the three homes, and we still have all three lots that would be in excess of the 5 acres. Again, speaking to, number one, the special conditions. Conditions are the location. Conditions are the topography, the wetlands to the west. And I think the way it's been designed, for the most part, tries to work with the ordinance as it was designed, except for, again, the fact that it's owned for business on the first floor. So what we're looking for is a variance to have the single-family dwellings and utilize the backlog regulations, which would allow for two, but when you try to do that long driveway with only two, it makes it a lot more difficult on the individuals who would be building the homes. So when you, again, look at the special conditions that exist, little enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. It's topography, it's location. Those are the two major things, the wetland on the front, which are all physical characteristics. With the fact that it's so far off the backside, it's another characteristic that really prevents any kind of commercial business of any way, shape, or form. And realistically, you know, we've all lived through this pandemic, which has really decimated the ability of the commercial sector to survive and to thrive. So new business at this time, and probably for the foreseeable future, is going to be very sparse. Granting the variants would be consistent with the ordinance. Again, the ordinances are created for us to have harmony within the community. You try to plan for the future, you try to direct your development in specific directions. I think we get to the point with this where, again, you want... The town wanted to promote that town center concept. The town wanted to have commercial. But I think in the process of the overview, the site-specific was not examined close enough. So, you know, therefore, again, there's no way that you can be consistent with the ordinance. The site has already been granted the access in the right-of-way previously. The Board saw fit for the special exception. And realistically, I mean, it's going to be beneficial. Three homes on almost 30 acres is definitely beneficial to the town, both tax-wise and the social capital that is gained with three new homes. So again, if you just reserved the 30 acres for one home site, which, again, is a note on one of the plans, what that does is really create a hardship on the land itself and the property owner. So again, the granting of the variants really would be consistent with the ordinance. It will not result in the diminution of surrounding properties. The surrounding properties have both, basically, Christmas Dove, Dr. Lemos, and actually, Dave Paolini purchased the backland from the Christmas Dove and has a project planned down there. That's all basically flatland and very little wetland in there as well, so that will probably turn into a project. But to be able to access this property even through that property in order to create something commercial just cannot happen with the fact that you have the topography that you do. The locations of the homes will actually be situated to create far greater than minimum lot-line setbacks, far greater size in acreage than the minimum size, which is all, again, a benefit to the community, because in effect, you retain a lot of green space around the homes. So the other thing, and it's funny to think about this, in that kind of a setting, to have commercial signs, directional signs, et cetera, that would be needed for a commercial use, just doesn't make any sense. I mean, realistically, you'd be trying to direct the wildlife as to where to go. So granting the variants would do substantial justice, absolutely. It makes the land useful, whereas with the current zoning, it is not useful at all. It just can't be used. So yes, substantial justice would be done because of the fact that it creates a value for the owner. And again, the owner is, I think, he's probably pretty close to 87, and this is, you know, just one of those things that they're trying to take care of before they have to leave it to the kids. Granting the variants would not be contrary to public interest. Again, public interest. What is the public interest? It's green space. It's tax revenue. It's social capital coming to the community. It's everything that we all think about. And in this case in particular, the three homes on 30 acres, more or less, creates a pretty good asset to the community overall and creates positive impact. So it would not be contrary to the public interest. Happy to answer any questions?
So Dave, just to be clear, you could put a planned unit development on this property, which requires usually a commercial, a mix of commercial and residential. You could probably get more residences in a planned unit development than what you're proposing here, which is three, right?
Probably not, given the topo. Again, the... Try to get a road in, you're going to exceed the percentage limits on the topo for getting a road to get in there to actually get to a point where it's a developable area. And again, if you tried to do a planned unit development, you would... You're just not going to get all of that set capacity on that land. We dug test pits in several locations, and were able to get a few of the pits that passed pretty well, but the most of them were basically sitting on ledge. It's like I say, that topography... It's, like I say, that topography shows that it's really good ledge up there. So, no, I don't think you could, I don't think a planned unit development is even possible.
Any questions for anybody? George? You're on mute. George, you're on mute.
I have a question, Madam Chair, but it'll be for non-public. I mean, after we go into session.
Deliberations. Dave, you have a question?
Yes. There's a lot, seems to be a lot of wetland impact in putting this in here. Has that all been considered and taken care of?
Yes, actually, the, there is not that much wetland impact. I think, and again, I'd have to look at the report, but I think the total square footage is less than, I want to say, less than twenty-three hundred square feet of wetland impact, and it's the only place where you can access the property.
But has it been?
It has been, it has been delineated, and soil scientists and the engineers have looked at it to be able to create the crossings.
So do you have state approval for that?
No, we do not. It would, it would be subject to state approval. Now, we haven't, this is a first step in the process.
Sorry.
Process is to go to get all of those permits and the planning board permits.
Okay. The other question I have is, this is considered to be one right-of-way that'll be privately managed by the three lots?
That's correct.
So, Dave, when you're looking for a variance, are you just looking for four-point-one-three or four-point-one-three-one-two-three-four-five or six?
Marcia, you're going to have to help me with that one. Four-point-one-three.
All right, so, first of all, under four, he said four-point-two is the general definition of what a, what a PUD is, town center?
No, I'm looking, Marcia, four-point-one-three backlots.
Yes.
Four-point-one-one, the parcel must have at least fifty feet of frontage on your existing Class Five or better road. He's not talking about that.
They, yeah, they are, but the, the board already cut off the, they proved it that way with that amount of frontage. I, I, you know, they approved the single lot that way.
Okay.
And, and the three lots, actually, there's enough frontage on that to have the fifty feet of frontage for each of those lots.
It's just they can't use that for access.
Right.
We have that prior.
Let me, let me pull the plan up, hold on.
Yeah, and the prior approval too.
Madam Chair, I'll go right ahead and ask, what's the life expectancy of that CBA approval that we did? ZBO-six, sixty-fifty-one, what's, with, does that have a sunset date?
Is that, is that the one you mean for Swenson?
As noted, as noted in his request, he talked about ZB-zero-six slash six-zero-five-one. And I want to know what the life expectancy, because this was put out in oh-six. And I just wondering, nothing's been done. And that's why I'm asking, is that still in effect?
Which?
No, I'm not trying to confuse you, Marcia, not trying to do that at all.
If you're talking, is it, what one are you talking about for the vari, you're talking of, the special exception was, was more than two thousand, was you saying two thousand and six or sixteen?
Six.
Six. Oh, that, that regulation, it, it's, that, that's, I don't know, grandfathered, so to speak.
Well, I asked the question, what is the life expectancy of that particular case? Is it, because right now it's two years, and I wonder if there was a, excuse me?
It went with the land.
I understand that, but you know, my question is, has that case expired? Because nothing, no work has been done.
It didn't expire because that law wasn't in fact, in, in effect. So that variance won't expire because it wa, didn't, it happened before the change in the state law.
Well, that's, that was what my question was, it took us a long time to get there.
Marcia, do you have what the variance was? Do you have that in the file?
It was actually a special exception to take access from a side not at the frontage.
Right, and that should have been in your package, I actually included a copy of that.
I don't see it in our package.
I listed it in the narrative as case ZB-zero-six, as George had said, six-zero.
Do you have the file?
I do not have the file. Oh, I could, let me, hold on, I'm sitting here in my office, I could go find it, hold on.
Marcia's looking for it. Does anybody else have any questions? Dave, your hands up or?
Yeah, so, it just seems kind of weird to me that the fifty-foot right-of-way, the original intent of that is not, I mean, the spirit of the fifty-foot right-of-way, I think, was so that if there were three houses, even if they shared one road, and they run into a problem with one of the owners of the property that's having to help maintain that one road, then each person has access through that fifty-foot right-of-way. And I'm, I'm really struggling with, and believe me, it's due to my own experiences with this, understanding how that spirit is being maintained here. Because those fifty-foot frontages are kind of a joke. I mean, they're, they're, but they're in the middle of a swamp. And if somebody were to say, I don't want to maintain this one easement or help maintain this one private access, I want to put in my own driveway. They really can't do that because this right-of-way narrows down. It does, I don't see where it goes down to, but it's pretty narrow. After the fifty feet, it narrows back down and then widens back out again when it gets out toward the lots.
So, you want me to respond to that, Dave?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, the very, the easiest solution is two things. One, there is always a shared driveway agreement. I have done many shared driveway agreements over the years. The shared driver agreement, in effect, is a recorded document that goes along with the deed. And that is a document that rules that everybody has to maintain their share of the driveway, as in economically, when there's repairs, they share in the plowing, all of that stuff is all laid out when they purchase the property and when they accept their deed. The second thing is, is that this is actually a forty-foot right-of-way. And the forty-foot right-of-way will not allow for any kind of a public road to go out to the back. So it's one more reason why you really can't go out and do a subdivision, either a PUD or a regular subdivision, in order to create any kind of lots out there. And again, the, the burdening really becomes one of, I'm trying to put one extra lot from the back, backlot ordinance in order to try and ameliorate the sum of the cost relative to the driveway extending as far as it does.
Does anybody else have any other questions, George?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry.
Marcia's, she's not, can you put it up, Marcia?
Okay. I mean, oh, I would have to scan it. What, what, what would you like me to put up? I'm sorry.
The what was granted, the special exception that was granted.
I didn't find the end of the deal on this. The rapid one.
I can't, Dave, I can't read it. No, you have to put it up.
Yeah, I didn't know if you could or not.
No.
Oh, found the notice of decision. Hmm. Let me go and have to scan this or something, other than, I don't know if I can.
While she's doing that, can I ask one more quick question?
Go ahead, Dave.
Was there, was there an original subdivision for this already approved? Is that, or am I mistaken?
Yes, there was.
Okay, and was that for two lots or, and that's why we're going for three now?
Dave could probably explain it, but.
So, the, Dave, the, the original subdivision subdivided the six lots off with the house and the barns, that you see up on the screen right now. So that's the original subdivision. There has been no subdivision of the two backlots to date. Instead of asking for two, what I'm looking for is the variance to do the third, based on the fact that, again, the three lots would help ameliorate the cost for the driveway. But no, there was no subdivision of a backlot on this property.
Okay, thanks.
George, you have a question?
Yes, I do. The, the other maps that, the other drawings out of here seem to be out of date. From September of oh-five. But the only other one that seems to be in date is the one that shows the actual subdivision of the three, the three lots. And the three lots that show coming off the road, they, they all make the fifty feet. But that's, that's what we have right there, so. That's a lot, that's, that's still a lot of wetlands, Madam Chair. By the time you turn around and get there and look at it, I don't think the intent of the other one that we approved, the number from oh-six meets exactly what they're trying to do here. So that's where I'm at, right there with it. I'm having trouble with it.
George, can I comment on that?
It's up to the chair whether you comment or not.
Go ahead, Dave.
So I think you're right, George. I think, you know, on the two thousand and five, September two thousand and five survey, it shows lot one-dash-one. And it looks like it's a subdivision to the rear lot of the lot, one-dash-one. And that has the right-of-way added to it. I didn't see on that subdivision plan that there were two lots for that.
That's right.
Now there are three. There were only, there was only one with a modified right-of-way to get to it.
The modification, the modification, the way it looked on the drawing is that they did that so as not to impact on the wetlands down by Route Nine.
Yeah, so left of the.
So when they go up there, it's minimized, but that was for one piece. And now they're asking to go from one to three.
I agree. That's, that was my concern. That's where my confusion was.
And then what's to prevent them from turning around and asking the Board of Selectment later to accept the road for those three houses?
Can't be the road, it's only forty feet.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, and if somebody refuses, it'll be in the same condition we have it. Possible, can, let me put possible there, conditions at another place where somebody refuses to do it, and then they just turn around and they end up having inaccessible road, as far as a clean accessible road is, you know, where there's potholes and everything else to it, so. But has, Marcia, have you found the original?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, trying to get it up there now. Hold on, hold on, I got it. Oh, wait, hold on, hold on. Here, oh, there it is. There you go.
For one house only. The applicant was asking to locate a driveway on a forty-foot easement on Lot One where the existing house is located. This driveway would service Lot one-dash-one for one house only. The curb cut is already in use for the abutting haze lot. The question for a special exception has been granted for the following reasons. So the prior one was for only one house on Lot one-dash-one, right? And that was back in two thousand and six. And when was this ordinance amended, Marcia, where they added the PUD and the town center?
Two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven?
Prior to, prior to me being there.
I think it was two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven.
I think.
I can, I don't know.
Brad, do you have any questions? We lost them?
No, I'm here.
Do you have any questions or anything?
Nope, I'm listening.
Are you familiar, is anybody else familiar with the topography up there?
I am not.
No.
Dave, is it possible to get up there and look at the topography?
Absolutely, be happy to take you up.
There's a road up there and all that, you can get up there?
Yep.
Even in this season?
Yes, yep, I was up the other day. Actually, even when there was almost a foot of snow, it was great, I was up there for, I don't know, almost three, four hours.
Is the passage to get out there where the right of, you know, the current passage, how you would get out there now, is that where the planned right-of-way is going to be?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Dave, we're the first ones to see this, you haven't been to the planning board?
No.
Karen, there's, Karen, excuse me, is there, there's one comment I probably would be remiss if I didn't bring up. About two, three years ago, the planning board brought forth a zoning amendment to try and change many of the lots that were currently zoned town center that were further away from the town center to village district. So it would allow for single-family, multifamily, larger mix of housing away from the town center. And it did not, it did not pass, it failed. The voters did not approve it.
Was this, was this property, would this have been part of the new, or would this parcel have been added to the village district?
Actually, and I don't know if it was intentional or not, even though I did up all the information for it, it was left out of that. So it would, it would have remained town center even if the ordinance had, had been, had passed.
Yeah, so what my concerns has to do with changing, allowing a use that's not permitted under the. So what do my concerns has to do with changing, allowing a use that's not permitted under the zoning ordinance? I have to tell you honestly. I mean, we've spent a lot of time creating the town center district.
So again, if I may, Madam Chair, um, I would love to take you out there just so that you get feet on the ground and eyes on the soil. Because it, when you get there, um, you just, you, you can't help but say, it's never gonna happen.
Yeah.
My concern is the extra back lot. I mean, we currently can have two back lots. And I'm, I'm still not clear on why we'd put three out there. It's. The road would have cost an awful lot of money.
Yeah, well, that's the reason why. I mean, the road, the driveway, and it's not a road, it is a driveway. And driveway will cost a substantial amount of money to get there. Uh, it's, um, it's quite a distance and, uh, you know, basically you're looking at about 50 bucks a foot. Um, at a, your minimum, uh, in order to get there.
Question, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, George.
Thank you. Dave, let me ask you a question. When you build that road, do you have to build the road for standard to carry a bus or, uh, not when you go to build that road out that way?
Um, again, George, no, it's not a road. It's a driveway. And no, we don't have to build it to town specs, although.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Yep.
That's answering my question. It says, because, because the length of the driveway and everything else, sometimes the bus will go up that way and they'll provide turnaround. You know how they are here in town, so that's why, I mean.
Buses, buses aren't allowed. The buses aren't allowed to go on private property.
Yeah, this won't be private.
The kids would be, the kids would be walking all the way down to the bottom of the hill.
All right, so is, are there any more questions for the applicant?
Uh-uh.
I don't have any, Chair.
Do we have any, um, I have one. Do we have anything from the abutters or is that something for your next?
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask if there's anybody speaking favor and then in opposition to.
Okay.
Um, is there anybody here on the line to speak in favor of the application? That somebody? Is, did nobody talk, right? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we'll pause the public testimony portion and the board will discuss it.
So I would like to see this continued for several reasons. One, for us to get out there to see the topography for ourselves as to what's going on. And I'd like to see input from other, uh, parts of the town. Planning board, possibly selectmen, whatever, because we're changing the town, you know, planning, town plan, whatever. So I just, I, I guess I don't want to rush tonight and I think we need time to, to look at this a little further.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
I didn't motion, I'm just talking.
Sorry, thank you.
We have to come out, we have to come out of our discussion portion. Because we should also talk about if we're gonna go there, when we're gonna go and look at the property. Okay? Um, what we can do.
So, go ahead. Yeah, I'd like to hear from the abutters about the additional traffic from the original intent here, which was one lot, not two. It was originally one, not two, and now it's three. So I'd like to make sure that the abutters are happy with that. If that's within our scope, I'm not sure if it is being newbie to this whole process.
Well, I have to tell you, Madam Chair, I think that going three is pushing it. And I understand why when it comes to the dollars and cents. I mean, you watch the pennies, the dollars will follow, and I understand that.
My concern, um, Marcia, if I can ask you, when I'm looking at this plan, they show that he shows the Google view approximate boundary north is up east to right on that page. How much more of that property is town center?
Oops, I mean, I'm gonna have to pull it back up again, hold on.
Yeah.
I still lost it, hold on. Let's see.
You see that page?
Yeah, I got it, hold on, it's coming up. Oops, oh. Where is it? Oh, I had it there, okay.
So, no, not that page.
Not that one? Um, hold on, if there's more than one in the plan set, so let me.
Look at the Google view, look at the Google view, approximate boundary, it's colored. It's a colored one.
Oh, it's colored one, helps.
What, you, you got color?
Color.
I, I may not have uploaded that.
All right. So I guess what I don't know is, is when you look at this lot, is it surrounded on all sides by portions of the town center district? I mean.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think it is to the north.
Um, Dave, and this is when on the public section.
So, so that's why I had gone through the, uh, effort of working with the board to try and get some of it rezoned to village. Um, it actually goes all the way over to the Lemus's property.
Yeah, I wanna, I want to get the town zoning map so we can see how much more of it is town center. Because I, I don't want to do spot zoning.
I can, let me, want to, do you have time, you want me to pull some, um?
I think we're gonna continue it anyways.
Okay, yes, because I have, I actually have what went to the, you know, files of what the voters identified which lots that were proposed to be rezoned from town center to village district, which would have been, you know, a little, uh, more residential would have been allowed. Um, and that would be helpful.
Yeah, but it didn't pass, it didn't pass anyways.
Didn't pass. But it would show which lots part of, which were in, um, actually in.
You can turn around, use the map, mapping section, you can get all that right on a different map.
That's what makes me hesitant about this. I mean, the planning board has not chosen to give up on the town center. Um, we did try to rezone part of it as village to allow residential development and the voters said no. So do we go against that, their wishes and change the town center on our own? That's, that's a problem I have with this.
Well, it's whether or not it meets the standard too. Is that consistent with the spirit of the ordinance? Substantial justice, not contrary to public interest and all that, so.
We also, we also have our approval earlier, it was for one, not two. And then we're trying to put three in there.
Yeah.
And that was special, on that exception, something special that the, uh, CBA put in there at that time.
All right, so let's talk, let's talk about if we do a sidewalk, we have to do it at the same time altogether in the public meeting. Okay? So we need to figure out schedules consents, concerning it since it's January. Um, do we want to look at sometime in the first week of February or do you want to go?
Sure. I can probably wait about Wednesday.
Okay, soon it will be better. Right now, you can walk out there fairly easily.
Yeah. Today's the 20th.
How about Sandy?
Sandy morning would be good, in the morning would be good for me.
I could do Sandy morning.
Yep.
I'd rather do it during the week. But I guess I could try to find a time on Saturday.
Are you talking this Saturday, Karen? Which Saturday?
Talking this Saturday since the weather's good.
Okay. Don't have an issue.
You're good.
1:23, I can make that, what time?
At what time?
I'm asking what time, Madam Chair.
I thought we were talking in the morning, right? Nine, Dave Whitten, can you do it then?
Yeah.
Nine o'clock on Saturday?
This Saturday, sure, nine o'clock.
Meet where?
Seems like we could park on the Hayes property. Sam Hayes's old place there. Or is it Russell? Hayes right there. Dave?
Oh, that's owned by, um, uh, the bank, right?
All right, I'm gonna open, go out of the, um.
Dave has a question, Madam Chair.
Because Dave's gonna make a suggestion, so let's move to the public part. Dave, you have a suggestion?
Okay, um, the, I have permission from the credit union to be able to park in that little circular driveway. It's off to the right.
Holy rosary.
Okay. Yep. Um, and I can make the nine o'clock, I may be a few minutes late. My daughter is moving that morning and I have to pick up her, um, U-Haul.
Can we do it at 10? Would that be better?
I can do it, it'll probably be five after nine because I just, I have to drop it off at her, at her place at, um, at five minutes of nine and she's probably about 10 minutes away.
All right. 9:05, 9:10 or something like that. Get it done.
Okay, I, I will have to post it, I'll just post it for nine.
Yeah.
I will post it for nine.
We'll wait for Dave. Okay, is there a motion to continue this?
Did we add any other, with our continuance, do we want to add any additional information? I, do we want some comments from the planning board, from the select and any other? Or are we just gonna go wrong?
No, I feel like that should be something that we should do because this subdivision is a little, I don't know, it's, it's kind of out of the ordinary, in my opinion.
Um, I want a better understanding of where the town center, um, zoning map is, where the lots are and all that. I'm not sure if there's a way to get, to be perfectly honest with you, I'm not sure that there's a way to get the planning board's consensus or opinion. Not like the competition commission. And it's kind of a, you know, moving target, the planning board. And not even if it's their consensus, it would still have to be adopted by the town. So realistically, it's a question of whether it meets the standard for a variance. And it's a use variance, it's not a distance variance, unlike the ones that we did before, which is, you know, that's one thing when it's footage, it's another thing when it's used. Not that technically the standard's any different, but realistically, it is a little different. Okay? Um, so anyways, so we're gonna meet on January 23rd at nine o'clock or 9:05. We posted one. And there's.
There's a motion out right now.
Your motion to continue, who made it?
I, I suggested it, but I will make it and make a motion to continue. And we do a sidewalk on Saturday at nine o'clock.
Yep.
And we will continue the case to next month.
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'm gonna, um, Ray, how do you vote?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I vote yes. So it's continued to the February meeting, which is what day? Marcia?
Oh, let's see, February 17th. No, yes. Yes.
Yeah, okay, February 17th. So. All right. Um, the motion to, uh, continue has been granted. We have a sidewalk scheduled for the 23rd. I think, um, that's it for this application for now. Um.
Thank you, folks.
You're welcome. And.
Thanks, Dave.
I'll email it over the, now.
Marcia, what?
I'll e- email you over a zoning map. I believe I'd be able, must have it in PDF form.
Marcia, when, when you do that for me, would you also give me the map and the, uh, zoning letter? Thank you. Sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, that's fine. Um, so we want to go on to minutes review. It says approval of November 18th, 2020 meeting minutes. Isn't that, we're assuming we're approving December?
We didn't have a meeting in December.
Have a meeting in December, all right.
That was a quick meeting, if I recall.
I think it was a record, wasn't it?
Right at the end.
It was a record in my book, which is a very short book.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve it?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from, uh, November 18th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
George, how do you vote?
Hi.
Cheryl?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
And I abstain because I wasn't there. Um, all right, I don't think we have anything else. Is there a motion to?
Second.
All in, oh, um, all right, Dave, how do you vote? Cheryl?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
And I vote yes. Cheryl, do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I had it raised before. There.
Yeah, they should pull it down. They should lower when you speak.
Marcia, can you hang on for a second afterwards? Got a question for you unrelated to zoning.
Okay.
All right.
Hey, guys.
Good night, everybody.
So, so Marcia, we've got an issue with, uh, Dave can stay on because it's about insurance, Dave. For road association.
Right.
Do, so do most roads, private road associations have, carry insurance in town? That you're aware of?
Gosh, I, I don't know, I've, no one's ever asked me that before.
Question to ask.
No, there's, I would, I could see there could possibly be some liability, right?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know. I, I don't.
You know, they're covered in case, you know, something happens, that something breaks, something, whatever. I mean, yeah, there's a liability to have in a road.
Uh-huh.
So, I mean, how would you define that as a liability, though?
I, I don't know how you'd.
Well, you know, if we, if we didn't maintain the road properly, we didn't sand it properly and somebody ran off the road or hit someone, you know, we could get sued. Uh, you know, the association could get sued, but then, you know, how do you have, you know, then were, were the officers negligent? What, you know, where, yeah, you know, I mean, it, you start getting stuff, giving lawyers stuff and they can take it a lot of different places.
I know in, in the state, like the state, um, in town, actually, for the municipality, um, there is some protection under the law, you know, that can't be expected to fix everything, that there's some things that are just gonna happen. But if there was something that was, um, brought forward, was definitely identified, was a problem, and the municipality didn't, you know, react.
Then they would be negligent, yeah. Yeah, but is there something that that might extend to private roads as well?
Well, I, from what I could read, I read.
But I answered that one.
So I did some research on this and then the two avenues that I looked at that might kind of lend to us not needing it are, one is if it's accessed from a public right of way, AKA not a town road, then it's technically public. Okay, so it's, it can be used by the public because it's not gated or controlled by a, a gate. So that puts it under the auspices of the town road. The other one I looked at was, um, an access that was put out by, I can't remember which department it was, but it, it entails recreation use, access for recreation use. And that, that's kind of like if you don't have your land posted and somebody rides a horse, a horse across it, the horse trips and falls and breaks its leg, you can't sue the landowner. Or if you're on a motorcycle and you crash, you can't sue the landowner. And that, so that's the other avenue of it. So I don't know if one or both of those apply here, but Ray's been kind of digging into it because we, um, we got asked by a, a title company on a, on a transfer of ownership on, on our property, I mean, on our road.
Yeah. I don't know, no fishing game, um, what, but is it not fishing game? Um. Yeah. With snowmobile trails and.
Yeah, exactly.
They have, they carry basically a liability, um, for, so that, that, um, people on trail networks and stuff are protected under this umbrella, um, from the state.
Do they carry a liability insurance?
The, I was talking. The snowmobile, but, well, I think there's a law that kind of. The snowmobile, well, I think there's a law that kind of protects them in some way, because the snowmobile, I was contacted by the snowmobile, um, group right here in Barrington regarding that, and they have to get a lot of, they have to sign, get sign-offs basically on every parcel the trail covers. And that has to do with, what he said to me was their insurance through fishing game. So, so there's some kind of protection in some way, but, you know, that's a fishing game kind of question. I don't know if it would be the road. I mean, anybody can sue for anything. That's the thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but if they get anything or not, that's different.
So, all right. Well, if you hear of anything, Marcia, in your travels, I think I posed, the, the question is an interesting one. So, and there are a lot of private roads in town, so.
Oh, yeah. I don't know, there's eighty of them. I mean, there's more, I think there's more private roads than there are town roads, and we've got about eighty miles of town road, so.
Okay.
There's gonna be more if this passes. So.
They don't, the town, you, to get the town to try and accept a, a road like that would be very difficult. I mean, though.
They wouldn't take it. They wouldn't take it.
Yeah, it, yeah.
Yeah, so, all righty. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Marcia.
If you hear anything in your travels, Marcia, let us know, so.
I will. I mean, there's something, you could probably Google, like, um, we, we kind of have the Bible of it's a hard road to travel, but that has to do a lot with, um, public roads.
Yeah.
And not, that has some good information into it, into it, because they, in it, but, um, that's kind of like the Bible we go by. And is that the hard road to travel? Because we do workshops periodically about liability and road maintenance and all those kinds of things.
Yep, yeah, cool. All right. Thank you.
Can I speak real quick? I, I'm sorry I'm still here, but, um, I, I, I had a quick question that I couldn't address there. Is it okay if I speak now? Because if it isn't, I'll just sign out.
Oh, no. Do you guys want to sign out? So is it about the application?
It is. It has to do with those three lots that could potentially be turned into duplexes.
Oh, you guys should probably, like, sign off.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just let me talk to her, is, is, oh, you know what, though? I didn't stop my, hold on, genie Christmas, I didn't stop the recording, I don't think. Hold on. Can't be doing that.
I'm out. Good night.
You're up. Make sure that's, stop recording there.